Welcome, all of those in attendance tonight. And get started with roll call.
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Nicole?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Mayor Heinem.
Here. Worst item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda as it is...
Approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have the minutes from the briefing on March 17th, the regular meeting on the 21st, and then the equalization board meeting on the 22nd.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the three meetings. Any questions on anything on the hearing? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Listed for you on pages 12 and 13 are the claims for the month. We went through those the other night. I don't know if there were any questions.
Approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claims as listed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent calendar, Brian? Any items? Okay. At this time, we will take public comment for anyone that would like to approach the podium and turn the mic on. And again, we do ask that we limit this to five minutes. If it's an item that is already on the agenda, we would take public input at that time. So if there's someone that would like to make a comment, this is your chance. If you would state your name and address for all of us.
My name's Melanie Morford, and my address is 300 East Cedar. So just a couple blocks down.
Go ahead.
My husband and I were just wondering if you would reconsider the easement for the Cedar Street project. It's currently 10 and 1/2 feet. And just looking at all of the other easements throughout the city, 10 and 1/2 seems a little bit excessive for that side of the street. So on the Main Street side last, it was two years ago, that project, that was 8 and 1/2 feet. Main Street is much more heavily traveled than Cedar. So I'm wondering why 10 and 1/2 and if it could be lower.
Anyone have any questions for Melanie?
Melanie, when you're talking about easement, what do you think of the boulevard width?
Between the sidewalk?
Yeah, from curb to the star of the sidewalk, as it stands right now, would be 10 and 1/2 feet. And then a four-foot sidewalk, I assume, is consistent with the other side of the road.
I would have to have a little bit of a refresher as to what the legal or what, if you could go through that, Tammy.
Sure. So in the core area, sidewalks are placed two feet from the property line. So Main Street is a little bit different than what Cedar Street is. And so the front of her property, she does probably have that eight-foot boulevard through there because that right-of-way gets more narrow towards the end of Main. Cedar Street has 66 feet of right-of-way, and so her boulevard width would be 10 and 1/2 feet along Cedar. So the project that we're doing this year, she would have 10 feet between the back of the curb and the sidewalk.
So this is consistent, but yet some inconsistencies. I mean, this is, we've done the other, some of the core area already, correct?
Correct.
Is this what we used in that previous core work?
Yeah, there are some, you know, complications or issues that we had to deal with in that first phase. There's a little bit more grade change, and so to make ADA work with slopes for the sidewalks, some of those were closer to the curb, some were farther away from the curb. We also had some driveways that were pretty steep, and so we tried to move sidewalks around so that there was minimal impact to their driveways. The first phase, yeah, we tried to keep it as consistent as we can with that two feet off of the property line.
And Melanie, this may be a dumb question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So why, why do you feel like the distance should be changed?
From our, where our living room is and where it's way in the front yard, like I guess the sidewalk doesn't really matter, but it's just privacy for people walking where we stand on the porch and stuff like that.
It would be closer to that, I see. Okay.
Also, just wondering what it would be like for two houses to the east. Their garage is like right at that 10 and 1/2 feet, so.
I don't know.
I don't think so for that, but speaking for all of you.
Sure.
Well, I appreciate your coming because I know that there's been some questions about this, and for us to really discuss it, we have to have it on the agenda as an agenda item, but I'm glad you brought it forward so that we can discuss it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and we can provide pictures if necessary, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
What does happen when a structure is butted right up like that?
So there really aren't any structures in the right-of-way, and so we would still be, you know, a couple feet away from one. Yeah.
Distraction.
What was the address? 300?
300 East Cedar.
Okay. Question, Jack?
Yeah. So Tammy's.
Push your button. Turn it on.
I will. Is there a reason that this has gone to 10, 10 and 1/2 foot as opposed to staying with the eight that they had until the other core areas?
Just because our design standards, we always place sidewalks from the property line, and so we were trying to keep them two feet from the property line to keep it consistent throughout the whole project. That's why it is the way it is. That's why Main Street is a little bit different than Cedar Street because those right-of-way widths are different.
So Cedar, how's it going to compare with the other streets, East-West and the North-South?
For Core Phase Two, for the most part, both Cedar, Beachhead Street, and First Avenue, they're all about that 10 and 1/2 feet. Once you get up to Second Avenue, we're going back up the hill by the elementary school, it's steeper right there, and so those sidewalks are pushed closer to the curb just so that we can make those driveways and slopes and ADA and everything cautious correctly.
It makes sense to me where the, where you have the slope, like you said, on Second Avenue. But I'm not sure in some of the other areas if it really does. I'd have to, I think Jim's thinking the same thing. He wants to go look at it, too.
So are there no sidewalks there now?
No sidewalks.
Right, right. Okay. Well, we can certainly probably introduce this as an item going forward.
So question on new developments, is it two feet off, same thing?
On new developments, it's one foot off. So our city standard is one foot off. In the core area, we're two feet because we can stay away from some of those existing fences and, you know, other things that they might have already in their yards. If you do go drive the project, there are stakes with a pink ribbon on it. That's the right-of-way line. So it would be two feet towards the road, and then that four feet, that four-foot sidewalk. So it'd be on the right side of it.
Okay.
But two feet from that pink stake.
Well, like Barb said, thank you for bringing it forward. We'll go from here.
Can we make a note to add it to the next agenda and maybe have a couple visuals?
Do you need to send anything or? You can send anything.
Yeah, it's always nice to see pictures. I'm going to make a drive-by.
Yeah.
Let me tell.
Drive to it. Don't shoot. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's better. Careful, I phrase.
Yeah.
Jamie looked at me a little crazy, but. Okay. No public hearing?
Nope.
Old business, anything, Brian?
Nope. Oh, yeah.
This is Adam Prossker. He is our new engineering tech. He started last week, and he showed up for the second week, so.
I'm doing all right, yeah, so.
Oh, welcome.
I didn't know if I needed to come up here.
Oh, that's great.
Where are you from?
I'm from Northeast Iowa originally. I've been in Parkston for the last four years as a maintenance guy there. Now I'm here.
Well, I'm a Tindall girl, so Parkston's.
Okay. I got you. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Little football coach, so you're a fine-looking young man to me.
Ask him, ask him where he played.
Oh, you played for U.S.D.?
I played for USD, yeah. You?
We both played against.
Little bit, little bit of everything. Offensive line, defensive line, little tight end.
Oh, good. Well, welcome.
I love seeing his decoration on his desk.
There you go.
How do you like that, Tammy? You had some stuff up today, too. I know. Yeah, right. I'm going to walk right.
I got another one waiting in the yard in East Gulf, too.
Well, welcome, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. Golf course, seasonal staff. We have some staffing.
Approve. We need, we need a motion on.
Yeah, we do. We have a motion and a second to approve the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, or nine different temporary employees for the golf course. Any questions? Anyone? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And they have started the fairway rehab today. So they're out rotating up.
Is that what they were doing?
Yeah, I saw that.
I saw that, too.
So that's started. Completion on the fairways, I think, is slated for May 12th, so.
So how many fairways do you?
Six.
Six?
Not all fairways.
Sure. Great. So like, that's 10 now coming down. Is that the width that you have now is the amount?
Hi, Andrew. Hi, it's been a while. Yeah, so it's just 10's kind of the whole fairway to the corner. It was determined by the architect and them based off of basically elevation lines and stuff where water sat. So there's, there's six different areas. Number nine is the only one getting completely redone. That's the one that takes the brunt of it, so.
Sure.
I believe they're going to start bunkers on Monday, so there'll be a lot of activity.
My wife and I drove by, and my wife said, "Are they putting a cart path right down the middle?" I said, "I hope so. Maybe my ball will hit that and fly up there a little further." Okay. Parks and Rec, we have a work report on page 15, and we also have irrigation well at Aspen Park.
Yep, I'll talk to city attorney. We'll get an agreement drafted up with baseball as to location, operation, construction, and who's, who's operating the well. So we'll get that hopefully for the next, the next meeting.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a very good idea. They can take pressure off of our water system for watering the fields with their own well.
So I know there was a question about where it's going to go, so they should just talk to Devon?
Yep.
And work, work through that together?
Yeah, between Devon and Raleigh, they know where all the...
Okay.
I shouldn't say they know where all of it because we're not sure where the electrical is sometimes, but we do know where the water main and the main power comes in at.
Okay.
So at this point, we don't need to do anything further with that.
Correct.
Swimming pool repairs.
Good news. They removed a couple concrete panels. They were able to dig down to the pipe that was cracked. They removed that section, and they did a pressure test, and the pressure test came back pretty good. So hopefully, they can just replace that one section of pipe and then backfill it and put some concrete back down, and we should be good to go. So we really won't know until we start it up, but everything else seemed to check out pretty okay.
And they've determined what caused it in the first place and can remedy that?
So we're still going to work on some of that as far as winterization and how to make sure that that doesn't happen this next year, but.
How big a section was it?
The crack section was probably three to four feet.
Crushed?
Cracked.
Cracked, yeah.
Yeah.
I assume there's nothing we need to do there than the information. Seasonal staff.
You got a list of seven employees for the Parks Department?
I'd make a motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the seasonal staff for the Parks and Rec. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public safety, 48 and 49. I don't know if there's anything there. Anyone has any questions on? And 2022 fire contract.
I'm Gary Limkey, the president of the Board of Directors for the Fire Department. We just have regarding the contract, three questions that come up on Section 12. They were regarding reporting. I had called it the audit, but just what is it that's going to trigger an audit? And who's going to complete it? Is it someone from the city or the outside firm, the same one that does the city audit? And then if it's requested and performed, who's paying for it? Is that out of us, you? You know, we used to split it. Just the, the board would like some clarification. We're ready to sign, but that's where we're at.
You want me to speak to that, Brian, or you want to go ahead? Well, first of all, thank you for what you guys do. We're very appreciative of the Fire Department and all the work sacrificed and time and commitment that we get from you, and we're, we're lucky to have you, so we do appreciate.
Thank you.
That's the first thing I want you to know. Question number one, what is going to trigger an audit? I think that's a very difficult, I, I don't know that there's any thing that would necessarily. I think it's more at the discretion of let's see where we're at. I mean, if there's some obvious sign, yeah, but I think, Gary, it's more just a check and balance going forward. It's a pretty significant amount of commitment.
Right.
The city makes to.
And our books are not closed to, to anyone by any means.
Yeah.
You know, we realize it is, it is a lot of money.
I think, I think what the council's trying to do is just be fiscally responsible in all of the monies that, that are, are used for city funds. So it's a little bit hard for me. I don't know if anyone else wants to comment on that, but we really didn't come up with any thing specific other than the discretion of the City Finance Director and, or if there were a council member that was asking.
Okay.
Don't think, I mean, I know this, there's nothing that has been in the past. It's just, again, a responsibility, I think, back to the citizens. Is the audit being completed by an outside firm, the same one that performs the city audit? I can't remember if we made a decision on that, Brian.
No, I think we talked about Christina performing a preliminary one, and then if something would show, then we would hire.
Right.
Someone to do it.
And I think, again, we're trying to look at this more, you know, we're not, we're not trying to spend any money from either side, but I think we feel like Christina can, if necessary, it may not ever happen, and it may be a situation where we look at it.
Okay.
If an audit is requested and performed, who's responsible for the payment? I think we determined that we would be responsible for that.
Okay. Those are just the questions that come up from our board meeting. Typically, we have one at 6 o'clock, same time you guys do.
Yeah.
But we'll be meeting after our regular meeting and, and training tonight, so if, as long as I believe, as long as those questions are answered.
Sure. Again, we're, we're, we're here to, to tell you sincerely that we're very appreciative that there's not a red flag that came up that, that I think, again, it's just a matter of being responsible.
Okay.
I think, Gary, what we were trying to do is save you guys some money, save us some money, but still not give away total responsibility for it. So this was kind of our in-between thing.
Yeah, and we were just trying to clear up, you know, it seemed pretty vague, and just wanted to get answers to questions of five peoples.
And then, Gary, the one thing, too, I know you said, is it the same one that the city audit? I think we decided depending on the time of the year, it more likely will not be the one that we have. We'd probably go to a different firm. If it goes through Christina, if there's red flags, then it would probably be somebody else, right?
Yeah, we, we do our audit in April, typically, April, May. So depending on the time of the year, you know, if it's December, it's going to be a separate firm. It could be the same firm, but it just wouldn't be done at the same time our audit is.
And, and we realize we, we do have two, that we had a short year because we changed from October 1 to September 30 to, so we have that short year, and then we have last year that we're still due. And so we'll be ready for that, but, okay?
Thanks for talking to me.
All right. Thanks.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Jack.
I think the only concern that I've heard amongst the board or the council here is the number of credit cards that are out.
Okay.
And me personally, I just wonder why there are so many, and, and maybe you could invite me as to how many there are and who has authorization on all of those.
So I, the total number, I can't answer, but I do know the chiefs have those for purchases that may not fall within something where we have an account.
Okay.
And then me, I, as a Board of Directors President, I have one.
So how many, how many chiefs did you say?
We have four chiefs. Robert, does everyone have a credit card?
I can address that. See you back there.
For those that don't know me, Robert Daxter, current Fire Chief. So we have Fire Chief and three Assistant Chiefs. So as Fire Chief, I'm responsible for everything, so I have one. And each Assistant Chief has a credit card because they're responsible for a certain area. One is training. We have to pay for the training upfront, training supplies. One is equipment, radios and apparatus, and like Gary said, if we don't have an account, it's payment due at time. And the other one is anything EMS-related, medical, which currently is about 60 to 70% of our calls. So that's all supplies, ordering, training as well.
Okay, I guess, I guess my question, and maybe it's just a procedural thing more than anything, is, is, so if you have extraordinary expense come in.
Mm-hmm.
I would assume that would be, you know, at the discretion of, of each chief, that yeah, we need, you know, hey, Joe, run down to Ace Hardware and pick up this or that. For training and more bigger ticket items, I would, personally, I guess I would think that that would come across as your normal bill-paying operation.
If it's under a certain dollar amount, it is. We have a, a max limit both on our credit card, and we also have a lower max limit set by the Board of Directors on what we can spend before we bring it to their approval. And basically, that's the emergent stuff that we need now. We can't wait two weeks, a lot of times.
Right.
To get stuff, so. The credit card is responsible for that, or each person that has a credit card is responsible for every transaction on that. We have to hand in a receipt. The treasurer knows within 24 hours that a charge has been made on that card via email, and we have to turn in a receipt. If we don't, we have a form that's based upon our accountant. And our accountant recommends that each person be responsible for their own credit card and their own account. It's checks and balances on our own member.
Cut. Thank you. I do have one. Do you have any other questions?
No.
I do have a question that, you know, and I think we discussed a little bit, and it's a, it's a, it's a concern going forward in time. How is staffing and recruiting, and is there things we could do to help? And I know that's got to be a challenge as we go forward.
It's becoming a big challenge right now. We are going to have to make the transition from a 100% volunteer fire department to something.
Yeah.
And what that something is, we don't know. We've got a committee together right now. They're looking at all kinds of, whether it's a paid-on call, whether it's shift, whether it's full-time, what, what, what we can do, what, what should we do?
Well, we've had some discussions, you know, amongst the council, and we recognize the fact that it's going to be more and more of a challenge.
Mm-hmm.
Volunteerism is certainly becoming.
Less and less nationwide, yes. And we're, and we're getting it here.
I guess my thing is if there's something that can be done or we could do, or we probably need to engage with you in those discussions going forward, I think we need to do that sooner than later.
Yes.
We talked even about, like Brookings, I think, has a full-time Fire Chief and then...
Assistant, too, right? We have two, is it Pete?
Brookings has three personnel. A Fire Chief, well, they used to. I don't know what they have now since Pete took over, but there used to be a Fire Chief, an Assistant Chief, and one administrative person.
Yeah.
And I believe Yankton is the same way.
Yankton has two.
Okay.
Brookings has four. So they have a chief, a deputy chief, kind of an admin kind of person, and then somebody who really does work. So they have a, a guy that maintains stations. They have four fire stations.
Yeah.
You know, so they're, they have a large training facility, so that person is responsible for the work.
Well, we need to, you know, as...
Can I brag a little bit?
Yeah.
We run about two to three times. The calls volume is Brookings.
Wow.
Wow.
Because they don't respond to medical, they do fire only.
The same with Brookings or Yankton.
Yankton.
Even hereon.
Yep.
Okay, so...
They have, they have pace there.
Yes, that's amazing. So realistically, like we did, like Mayor said, we talked about this roughly a timeline. No one ever knows, but where do you think we would have to get to that point where, like you said, we, I know you're doing, you're having conversations now, whether it is something that we may have to add for city employees or if it's something, I don't, I don't know the role of fire departments, like how they all work.
Well, we're, we're hoping that this committee can gather some information. I mean, they are in the process of doing that constantly, and once we have more concrete information gathered as to, you know, what will probably work, what might work, then we definitely want to sit down and, and discuss that. Is it with city?
Yeah.
City position? Is it a fire district, tax district? Is it what?
That's what Brookings and Yankton is, right? They're city employees. Is that right?
I believe they're a city department, aren't they?
Yeah, they're a city employee, city department. It's the City of Brookings Fire Department, City of Yankton Fire Department.
This is like the police department.
Yankton does run two. They have a rural Fire Department, and they have a board, you know, it's a taxing entity as well.
At one point, we had approached the topic of maybe looking at the priority level calls to try to lighten your guys' load. Is that conversation worth pursuing any further to buy a little time?
We can. I mean, that's, that's an option, but...
Because how many, what percent ballpark are the calls that you probably don't necessarily need to go on? Was it the priority three?
I can look at the last month's report. I think I have a copy here. Sorry, I'm getting old and can't see. 35 calls in February, so we don't have the March totals yet. 14 were priority three, but those aren't necessarily priority-three medical calls. Those are just priority-three calls. Fluid spills, car accidents, lift assists, things like that. So we would still, somebody would still have to respond, whether it's ambulance or us. For the lift assist, the fluid spills, more than likely, the Fire Department's still going to go, just in case.
Is that a conversation you guys feel is worth having? I mean, if I, the last time we talked about it, it just felt like there was a lot of redundancy.
I mean, if I, the last time we talked about it, it just felt like there was a lot of redundancy.
We, we certainly can. I don't think any of our members right now would be heartbroken over giving up calls.
And unfortunately, sometimes they change. You know, it comes in as, I can, I can cite one call where it was a lift assist. The guy fell down. And by the time Robert got there, he was in cardiac arrest. You know, we worked a, we worked a code on this guy from him falling in the parking lot of his apartment complex to going in the house and him. He passed, you know, I mean, unfortunately, he passed away. But, you know, those calls are hit and miss. You know, you just don't know what it's going to be at the end.
Well, anyway, we, we recognize also that we need to further the discussion on this. And I don't think we're going to decide it tonight. We're recognizing that change is coming. And so I appreciate the fact that your committees are looking at this. And I would encourage you to continue to do that. And we got to get a game plan.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So might I suggest on this section twelve where we have reporting, could, because the council doesn't stay the same, my memory fades, staff may change. Should we put in there that we would pay for the audit if we requested it, just so that that's clear?
We certainly can. I think it was more a rhetorical question from them is what is here. But I think we certainly can.
It's upon our request.
Yeah, why would I request?
Is that, is there anything in here with the agreement? Or is that at, what section is that, Christina?
Section twelve, right at the bottom.
Page fifty-three.
Just because we know how these things go.
And we could add, Brian.
In a sense, reading that last paragraph, in addition, the city may at its sole discretion require and perform an audit.
So that kind of tells me that the city's doing it, the city would pay for it. Am I wrong on that or?
Well, it doesn't, doesn't say that they would pay for it.
I think, I just think at, at city's expense, being added would take care of it. Okay.
Do we, do we have a motion on?
Uh, we haven't, we haven't. Yeah, we, even with that amendment?
I'll make that motion second.
A motion and, are you making a recommendation to approve the contract and the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the fire contract with the amendment at city expense to the expense of an audit. Any other questions, anyone have? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the, city was, city staff was asked to come back with some kind of a amendment on the question from the request from the farmer's market for a change in the permit. This was basically initiated by a, the sale of wine at the present farmer's market, which is located on Split Rock. And I think there's either an anticipated move or have they already moved?
Anticipated move, I believe.
The winter market is currently at a church. And it's anticipated that the summer market will move.
Come on up, do you want to speak to this?
My name's Tony Lanu, co-owner of the farmer's market. And yeah, currently, we're at Faith United Church for the winters market. We have our last winter market this upcoming Saturday. And the whole thing about moving there is, five years ago, we didn't realize it would take off this much and grow this much. Like this winters market on Saturday, we have twenty-eight vendors with like almost a ten-vendor waitlist. And with the parking lot we're in now, we're restricted to the amount of vendors. And we have to turn vendors away, which is city revenue, small-run family businesses that can't showcase their product. We've had multiple businesses get their start-up at the farmer's market and then open up a store in the mall, something like that. I mean, it was, gave them the confidence to do it. And also, we love having fundraisers there as well, like Girl Scouts, B-Squad, Dog Rescue, Humane Society. But with the space we're in now, we can only really limit it to one fundraiser a week. And if we moved to the larger parking lot, we could have unlimited fundraisers for, because we have other churches that do fundraisers for mission trips and whatnot. And we're just really restricted on our space right now. And with the wine thing, I have never seen somebody buy more than one glass of wine while they walk around. It's not like she's pouring glasses upon glasses of wine to people, you know? And then her samples are like one to two ounce samples, then somebody could buy a bottle and take home. And it's, instead of her selling it out in the county, this is also bringing the money into the city as well. So we just really like the consideration on this.
And we've, we've been bantering this back and forth because obviously you're having to change a ordinance.
Yes.
And that it's difficult because you try to think of all of the different scenarios that one change can initiate. And so it's been, you know, I think on the surface, we go, yeah, that makes sense. Let's go ahead and do this. But there are, and that's why we've had to debate this back and forth. Council, I don't know what kind of questions you might have.
Well, I have one for chief. They can give out samples of alcohol or wine? And glasses? I mean, how is that legal?
There's a minimum amount that they can give out for a sample.
Yeah, for sampling.
For sampling.
And that doesn't matter what age groups are around or anything?
I didn't have to look it up, you get details on it, but I could hear on top of it. But there's a difference between private property, public property, as far as public taxation or public consumption. And then there's, you know, rules that govern the same. And for things like that, I didn't hook them up between the.
I don't know that we were necessarily aware that, that there was sampling taking place. I mean, maybe, maybe I should have known that. I don't recall that we discussed samples.
I recall the sampling, but not the walking around drinking wine on the property. That part I didn't catch if that was discussed.
I mean, that's something, if we have to eliminate that, that's not a problem.
When you mentioned you had a big waitlist, are most of the other vendors, farmers, crafters, do you have a lot of other alcoholic type of requests?
We don't have any, any other thing for the alcohol side. It's just Wild Prairie Vineyard right outside of Brandon. Yeah, like our winter market's got a little bit different type of vendors. It's a lot of, uh, more crafty stuff, home goods, handmade wood decorations. I mean, we do have some of the food stuff there, homemade food as well and food trucks and whatnot. But yeah, there's no other alcohol request. And we, she was just one of our original vendors, so we want to stay loyal to her as well.
So the church is okay with it?
The church is okay with it, correct.
So I did reach out to the area communities and the ones that responded back. That had no restrictions of this kind was Canton, Beersford, Crooks, Baltic and Sioux Falls. Yankton had a hundred and fifty feet from the property line of a school only. Phillip, that's a small town, was the same as us. Harrisburg, they were actually a thousand feet from a church or school. But a large majority were no restrictions.
It's in a farmer's market or?
Really, this was any alcohol.
Any.
Yeah, because right now, our, our ordinance states it has to be within a hundred yards or three hundred.
Hundred yards of the front.
Hundred yards from the normal traveling distance from a church and a school.
Any other questions that anyone, anyone might have for Tony? Well, good job on the amount of vendors that you're attracting. That's fantastic. I didn't realize it was quite.
Yeah, and I mean, every week we get people that come up and just thank us for bringing it to the city of Brandon. So they don't have to drive to Sioux Falls and whatnot. And they, I mean, the citizens really appreciate having the market. We just want to be able to offer a bigger variety. With respect to the other businesses in that parking lot, that's why we can't take up more space because there is other businesses there. And with the attic going in next door, we don't want to fill their parking lot up either with customers or whatnot.
Yeah, it's going to, going to get restricted more and more.
Yes.
Well.
So I was at it, the winter one, it was very nice. So where are we at on this? We don't have a draft? This is the draft?
Yep, there's, there's two ordinances that need to be amended or two sections of the city code that need to be amended. Both of those, the draft language from, from the city attorney is included on page fifty-five. The first one that we talked about was section two-three-two on or off-sale liquor licenses. And that's the distance from churches that would need to be amended to something less than a hundred yards. Now, that's as the normal travel, not as the crow flies. And then the other one that needs to be amended is section six dash three dash eight point one, which only allows farmer's markets in the central business and general business districts. The church where they're proposing to have the farmer's market is in the institutional zone. So we would need to add the institutional zone as a permitted district for farmer's market.
And then you've got a couple amendments down or samples down at the, well, I don't know, as far as four samples, no samples or samples of malt beverages.
Just that those are things to consider. So Lisa's just saying those are things you could consider. You know, you could add those if you didn't want samples or if you want to limit samples.
I can't say as necessarily against the samples, but I would probably have to say walking around with a glass of wine or whatever would probably be a.
That's understandable. That's understandable.
We do allow other businesses to get one-day liquor licenses, correct? Like, so if a business wanted to serve wine in their store, they could come and apply for a one-day license and do it.
Yeah, I mean, there's limits on it. And I don't remember what those are. You got charitable, contributional, fraternal or something like, you know.
We've allowed it in retail settings. Some of the boutiques have allowed, we've allowed them to have alcohol that they serve when you walk in the door. I know that in McCarty Park, for two years, we allowed beer to be sold during the McCarty Market. Two different beer vendors were there. I guess, I don't really have a problem with this. I think it's just fine. I think it's, it's, it's not beer distributing, coming in and selling beer in the parking lot.
Correct.
It is a local grower right outside of town coming in to sell their product. I also think there's probably more options because there are people making beer, there are people making whiskey, there are people making vodka. You might get inundated with people who are actually growing their own products and turning it into this stuff.
Yeah.
And they're all out there and it's all very much legal to do. So I guess I don't have a problem with it because we already allow for it in other parts of the city and other places in the city, including our own property. So I don't see a problem with this.
Tim, do you see any issue with opening it up to the institutional zoning at all? You know, we always try to think ahead.
Remember, the institutional zones include the schools, us, churches. What else from there? That's it, right?
And all of our parks.
Yeah, I just told you, we allowed alcohol in our parks during the McCarty Market. So, and we allow it in picnic shelters when somebody wants to have a family reunion. So institutional zones are those, basically those three categories. And what we did with the institutional zone, if I remember correctly, but it was created to allow for more flexibility because most institutional zones that we looked at are very large properties. All the churches have very large properties. And we were restricting those properties based upon what we were considering, you know, normal-sized lots with normal-sized restrictions. If you have nine acres, you should be able to have more than, you know, X. So I don't see a problem with it in institutional zones. Any other comments that anyone has? Do we feel like there are some other wording that needs to go into this before we even look at making a motion to? I mean, I think there's some sampling that needs to be defined a little bit more clearly. I, I agree with the walking around. I think Tim brings up a pretty good point. I think you see more and more of the beers and the wine, or the whiskeys and some of those things. Sooner or later, you're probably, you know, looking at some of that. And, you know, it can, it can mushroom on us a little bit. So it's, it's tricky.
Yeah.
I would go along with that idea too, Jim, because typically you have a beer and wine sales. And so now if we're going to allow wine, it won't be long. And someone will want to, you know, craft brews and things like that. And we, then we make that leap from wine to include beer and such. It's not going to be a very large leap to go from there to distilled spirits. There's people out there now brewing, you know, and brewing their vodkas and brandies and, and things like that. Cordials, we already have listed here, liqueurs. So I don't know, I just think that the ramifications, the possible ramifications down the line a ways. Things that we don't even know what's happening or what could happen. I think we possibly would be opening up a can of worms here. And respectfully, I'm going to have to be against this.
I think Julie had answered on speakerphone as far as Wild Prairie offering these products. Are they in like the local liquor store in Sunshine?
They are in the liquor store in Sunshine, correct. Yeah. And as a owner of the market, we restrict certain sections of how many vendors we can have. And at this time, like our meat vendors, we only allow one person to sell beef, one person to sell pork. Not anymore, because if you have a whole bunch of them, then nobody makes much money and it's not worth their time. And we could do that with the alcohol sales too, because we could tell them if they can come or not, you know? And restrict it to just that one and not let it grow anymore after that.
We try to honor local, is that correct?
Yes. Because everybody that comes, our, our farthest vendor is one who sells beef, boss beef. He's from Iroquois, South Dakota, by Huron. And that's the farthest one we have. And then we have an orchard right across the border into Minnesota. Otherwise, everybody else is within fifteen to twenty miles of Brandon.
I'm wondering too, maybe, you know, a wine and beer license typically go together. Distilled is something, it's a different animal. Would it be wise to just limit it to wine and beer? Now, craft beers have a higher alcoholic content, I think, than regular beer, but I don't, I don't know, but.
I think that's actually a really good idea.
Well, when, when we get right down to it, they're selling, they're selling a product to be packaged and taken home. And, and again, not walking around with a glass of wine or a shot glass of whiskey or anything like that. I guess I don't see the issue in that context. I would probably say that selling glasses to walk around would be a no-go.
That's understandable.
And, and I don't think you'd want it to turn into something.
No.
Like that, especially if you started having distilled. It's, it's for a product that's going to be, again, bought, taken home and probably consumed, there would be the idea. Just like they go into a liquor store and buy it and take it home, hopefully not drinking in the car on the way home.
Because she will not open the bottle of wine and give it to you. It's going to have the cork sealed, put in a bag, given to you. She's not going to open it up, give it to you so you can have it on the drive home or wherever else.
So I'm, I'm not sure what exactly people are thinking as far as the concern of what's going to happen. You know, the Pandora's box or whatever. I, I don't see a Pandora's box. I, I don't see a Pandora's Box situation on this. So I'm not sure.
Where I see that possibility coming, Dave, is, is, uh, at other events as well. If we have, if we allow beer and wine and then, um, liqueurs and cordials, that's, uh, we're, we're, we're not drawing a very definitive line there, I don't believe. And, and let's just say down at, uh, one of our parks, we have someone that makes the request for beer and wine and cordials and such. Now, how do we tell them no if we allow it at a, at another location?
Again, we're not talking about drinking it at the location. It, it, it is for sale, and this ordinance that we're talking about is specifically geared towards farmer's market.
Yes.
So where it comes up with the parks or, or things like that, like we had with the, uh, down at McCarty Park, um, you know, that's a different animal. We're talking about farmer's market type of setting here on this.
Because you're still gonna have to approve...
I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Something like a McCarty Park would still have to be approved by the council.
Yeah.
So I think you're, you're probably...
So how would the part about not walking around drinking wine need to get addressed?
Yeah, we would be, if you look at, uh, section two-three-two, it refer, walking around drinking a wine that you purchased is considered on sale, so what we would do is off-sale only and no on-sale or, or on-premises consumption. Add some language such as that.
And then allow for samples?
Yeah, the samples, I think, you know, on, on that next page, on page fifty-six, you know, the, the alternative language that says three fluid ounces from malt beverages or cider or fifty milliliters. I'm not sure why Lisa changed from fluid ounces to milliliters, but that's okay. Something along that line.
So you feel like, yeah, I, I guess I didn't see that part. Well, I think we've, uh, I guess at, at this point, we'd have to entertain a motion to approve this, or...
No, this, this is just a draft form. We, we do, you know, taking this into consideration, we, we'd prohibit any on-sale consumption or on-premises consumption. If you're comfortable with the, the sample language with the size of samples, we'll include that, and then the first reading would be at the next, second reading would be on the, on the second. It would go into effect, I think, June first or so.
Okay. Do you know, do they allow, uh, do they sell wine at the Sioux Falls Farmer's Market? Is there a wine vendor there?
I have not been there in a few years, just because we've been busy at this one.
You don't know your competition?
I'm pretty sure that they have beer vendors there.
Sure.
And I can't speak on the wine part, because I think they got a local brewery that goes there, and I don't, I don't know if they sell it by the glass, if they sell it by the bottle. I can't speak to them.
Okay.
Well, let's make the changes and then bring it back for the...
Yeah, the, the only other question I've got is, do you wanna restrict it to wine, malt beverage, alcohol? I mean, do you wanna put any restrictions on that? Because as you've discussed, if you do wine now, as demand increases, maybe malt beverages will come back in the future, and then bourbon or mulch shine after that. Do you want, do you wanna restrict it to wine only now and then consider those options in the future?
I think I would restrict it to wine only right now. It would be...
I, I don't have a problem with, once again, having, having the rest of it in there. You know, after looking at it, it's, uh, again, it's for sale to take home, just like it is at the liquor store.
It is, but at least it would give us a chance to see how it goes, and at that point, if we feel comfortable with how it's progressed, we move forward. That's where I would be.
I guess my other comment would be, this is a farmer's market, and most of the wines are made by grapes grown by the growers. I've been on the wineries, they have grapes, they're actually farmers, and they're selling a product that they farm. A lot of the beers that are made, the hop farms, there's one right outside of Valley Springs that they're making their beer with, so they're actually farmers too.
Yes.
And there's a whiskey being made up in South Dakota where they, they farm all the grain that then becomes the whiskey that they make, so they're actually farmers too. So in a farmer's market, you would want to buy products that are, you know, made by farmers.
Yeah.
So I don't have a problem with it.
Counsel, others? We wanna leave it with wine for right now, or do we wanna direct staff to do?
Yeah, I, I would say wine. I would just add, I mean, my only hesitancy, I mean, if I were to go to the farmer's market, I grow most of my own vegetables, so I would be the one leaving with a bottle of wine.
Yeah.
My only hesitancy is that we're, we're changing an ordinance off of one request, and that's why I'm just a little slow to the trigger, because there aren't more lined up that are asking for the same thing. It's not like it's a hardship for Wild Prairie, because they're sold here locally, um, so that's my only hesitancy, but I think if we button this up, um, it makes sense, but I would support the wine only to see how it goes.
Why isn't she here, the one that's selling the wine?
She had prior obligations. We contacted her, and she was not able to make it tonight.
I think you've done a good job explaining what, what your intent is, so I think we're good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is furniture quote. Christina?
Sure. Uh, we've moved around some offices with the new staff that we've added in, so we have engineering department over here and council chambers now. We've kind of moved our meeting room around, so to just update that and get some office furniture for Tammy and, and, uh, clean up the front entrance of City Hall a little bit. This would, this would do that. We do have some budgeted amount in the general building account of ninety thousand for kind of just general improvements, so that would fall under that. Total for the three areas for furniture would be a little over eighteen thousand two hundred.
We have a motion and a second to approve the furniture, uh, purchase. Any other questions anyone has? I think we... Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twelve-twenty-two authorizing the sale of three million dollars of sales tax revenue bonds for the Core Phase Two-A project.
So the Core Phase Two-A project is really closer to five million dollars. We do have a application into the state right now for them to do thirty percent of that for the ARPA funds that they're doing, so we do not know a hundred percent for sure on that, but we do wanna get the bonds going because interests are ri- rising. So, um, we have three million dollars right now. If everything goes through with the state, then we'll be fine, but if it does not, you know, we'd anticipate borrowing another million or so towards the end of the year. I do have a couple options for the ten-year or fifteen-year bond. The difference is about a hundred thousand dollars in annual debt. At this point, we would just recommend the fifteen-year, just to allow for, um, room for cash flow in the future, and then if we would need to do an additional bond in the fall, then it would allow for that too.
Can we pay it ahead if we have the capability?
Yeah, um, I think it's about a ten-year, nine-year, or ten-year, so you can pay it on, pay it early.
Well, especially if, if in fact we do need to raise it to five, we better have fifteen. Sure. Or would that have to be a separate bond?
It would be a separate bond.
Okay, I think it's prudent. I mean, as interest rates continue to rise, we're gonna see some half point, and that can affect this great deal over a period of time.
Do you need a motion?
Yep.
A motion and a second to approve the, uh, sale of three million sales tax revenue bonds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We've had a request to publicize Planning and Zoning Commission meetings.
I was the one that made that request. We had talked about it a little bit, uh, a month or two back, and it just seems like a really good idea, since a lot of the topics at P and Z seem to be marathon in nature. It just is hard for people to necessarily get a, a good idea of how things have developed or evolved. I think we've got the equipment set up to be able to do it. It would make us more transparent with people that wanted to research topics and/or stay informed, including council. Like this month, I noticed the P and Z meetings are off from our briefing meetings, so unless you wanna be here every Thursday, it would be an alternative way to stay updated. And it's also, I think, just safer not to be exchanging, uh, the flash drives to be able for residents or us to listen to those audios.
I'm not sure who this question goes to. What, what would it take to, to, uh, incorporate this?
We've already got the equipment. It'd just be a matter of training a staff person to run it for P and Z meetings, and then the posting would take place the next, the next day, just like council meetings.
Yeah. So it's fairly minimal.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve the publication of Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. Any other questions anyone has? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are in need of a copier?
Yes, we have a budget actually to upgrade or update our copier this year. Normally, we trade that in, however, we are gonna keep our old copier, move it over here for the staff that is over in the council chambers. We budgeted ten thousand, this copier does come in under that, about ninety-eight hundred, so we're under budget.
I'll donate one to the city. How about that? Would that be helpful?
We're good.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of a new copier? Any questions? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The Encore Park Assignment Agreement, I see we've gotten through that.
Yep, you've got a revised draft, um, that I had laid on the table. The only change is we would pay the developer, uh, their increment unless the bank notice, gives us notice of a bank default, and then we would send the, the notice to the bank, or the payment to the bank. So it doesn't change any obligations for the city, it doesn't change any obligations for the developer or the bank.
And we've approved the...
You've got the TIFs in place, the developers agreement's in place. This is just if, for some odd reason, uh, the developer misses a payment to the bank, the bank would give us notice of default, which is always good to have, and then we would send the payments directly to the bank.
Assuming some of this came from the bank as a request of the bank.
Yep, the bank, this is really an agreement between the bank and Hague.
Right.
We're just kind of a third party. It's been reviewed by our city, well, Patrick Connect at, at the law firm. He's the one that made the revisions here today.
Very good.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Encore Park Assign, Encore Park Assignment Agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a tax abatement request. We have a motion to approve the tax abatement and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Streets, your work report is there. We have a request for dust control on Redwood and Chestnut.
Yep, Brandon Township has submitted a request for us to pay for dust control on Redwood and Chestnut, the copy of the cost estimate from BX Civil's in your packet, and then I laid an email out from Scott Tripp. He couldn't make it to the meeting tonight.
And those are things we've done in the past.
We've done it the last four years, I think.
First year, I was here, we split it with them, and they paid for it ever since.
Is this the same roads that we could annex?
Yep, it's Redwood and Chestnut that we, that we proposed annexing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to, to approve the dust control on Redwood and Chestnut. Any questions, comments?
When did we move away from splitting it with them? I don't remember that discussion. And why did we do it?
They requested it and made, yeah, made arguments that it was more use of our, our citizens than their citizens.
So what are the limits, I guess would be my question?
Basically, Redwood from the bridge to the intersection of Chestnut, and Chestnut south from Redwood to the...
Oh, okay.
So it's about a mile.
Okay, so that is all, uh, like, like you said, that's all pretty much used by the city residents.
Yeah, and then with, with tower construction this year, we're using, uh, Chestnut, supposed to be using Chestnut. I'm assuming we are. Would have been more than normal.
So we're just talking about the sixty-six hundred and forty dollars?
Correct.
So now I've forgotten, have we, we, yes, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I, I forgot, uh, resolution thirteen-twenty-two adopting the design standards. City attorney has requested it to lay that till the next meeting.
Okay.
You'll have two chapters next meeting.
Boy, it's about like going back to school, you have to study.
There will be a test.
Core area Phase Two project testing contract with Geotech?
So this is just testing for our construction materials, so concrete, earthwork, that sort of thing. It's pretty much on a will-call basis, so pretty much whenever the engineer deems it necessary to do some testing, um, we typically do quite a bit of testing on the concrete just because, just to make sure that everything passes and everything looks good. We're estimating that it is thirty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. But again, it's will-call, so it's most likely.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the, uh, project testing contract with Geotech. Any other questions anyone has?
Is that similar to what we paid for the first phase? Yeah.
It is, it's real similar, and we'll come in a little bit under that, hopefully, as long as everything checks out well.
So Tammy, what type of projects or what projects do you test?
Concrete, all within city limits?
We do, yep.
Including like sidewalks and all that?
Yep, sidewalks, curved and gutter, um, few approaches. Yeah, compaction, so...
What was the last one?
Compaction.
And then, uh, one thing to note is, we only pay for the passing tests, so if there's one that fails and they have to retest, then, uh, the contractor pays for that on their own dime.
It read by mine. Oh, absolutely, it's must.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the project testing contract with Geotech. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. A change order, a water tower change order?
Um, our contractor, AB Contracting, is requesting ninety days extension for our water tower project, uh, due to labor shortages.
It, it does benefit the city.
It does benefit the city. Um, we have to put in our pressure-reducing valves, and we most likely will not meet that September first deadline, so this gives us a little bit of extra time, too.
Okay.
Winter weather won't be a factor for what they need to do at that point?
No, they should have it painted and everything up. A lot of it is gonna be the testing part of it.
A motion and a second to approve the water tower change order number three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. No new business?
No new business. We do have executive session to pending litigation.
And just to remind you, we do have a Monday, a meeting next Monday, five-thirty, for interviews.
Since I can't vote, do I have to be here?
Yes.
Goodbye! You guys are there to have a voice, I don't wanna be here.
Leave that to your discretion.
Okay.
So that is next Monday?
Next Monday.
What time?
We try to do five-thirty, so we'll see if it works for all the candidates, or at least one of them.
How many, uh, names have been?
We've got four.
Four, great.
Four pending litigation.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Clear the meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming.